Good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting of September 16th, 2024, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education. Board of Education meeting. This is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Jacob Itzkazier.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Parks. Sancy. Whitman.
Here. That brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance. We're happy to welcome Lincoln Elementary School, and they will be leading us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm Abby. I'm in second grade.
I'm Maslow. I'm in second grade.
I'm Conia, and I'm in second grade.
I'm Jane Lynn in second grade.
Good job. Good job.
I have the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, students.
You guys were amazing.
Thank you.
I move the Board of Education approved the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor signify by saying a. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry. That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 12th and the special meeting on August 27th, 2024, as submitted. Second.
It has moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 12th and the special meeting on August 27th, 2024, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor respond by saying a.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution of paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of same.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution appointing paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing execution of the same. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This goes to a roll call vote, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Jacob Itzkazier.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Parks. Sancy. Whitman.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I move that the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the tax form, the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Jacob Itzkazier.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Parks. Sancy. Whitman.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I move that the form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the form of continuing disclosure certificate be placed on file and approved. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Jones.
Aye.
Parks. Sancy. Whitman.
Aye.
Bradley.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Jacob Itzkazier.
Aye.
That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $14,995,000 in school infrastructure, sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2024, of the Dubuque Community School District, state of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapter 423-F of the Code of Iowa and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the terms of issuance and securing the payment of $14,995,000 school infrastructure, sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2024, of the Dubuque Community School District, state of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapter 423-F of the Code of Iowa and providing for a method of payment of said bonds. Is there any discussion?
I guess I would, I would just like to, the, the community probably knows that we have committee meetings before these monthly board meetings. A whole lot of work goes on in discussion and information and debate and discussion. Then we come here and we vote on it. But I'm wondering if the community would benefit by knowing, Ms. Hawkins, what, what we're...
Kevin, do you want to come up and just talk a little bit about the bonds and the new law that requires to go through these motions?
Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Hawkins. Yes, tonight, we're finalizing the bond process. What you're doing tonight is approving all of the rules and requirements that we, as a district, will have to follow once we receive payment. Earlier, you approved the sale. Now, the sale will take place and we'll receive the funds on September 24th, and you're approving the final documents. The bond purposes, as we talked earlier, for the Eisenhower Gym and additional classrooms, secured entrance, as well as the mechanical improvements at Irving Elementary. Anything else you want me to cover on that?
No, I think that summarizes it.
Can you explain, Mr. Kelleher, what, where that money comes from?
Sure.
We understand the use of it. What is it, where does it come from?
It's coming from the one-cent option tax that all of us pay as citizens when we purchase goods. The district collects one cent, a sales tax on that, and those funds are then distributed to the district on a monthly basis. So, we use those, we will be using those dollars to pay off these bonds in the future. We're getting the money ahead of time to build the structures, and then we pay off those bonds using those proceeds from the one-cent option.
So, this total amount of money will cover both projects, the Eisenhower Gym and the Irving HVAC system?
That is the plan, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for clarification, Kevin. Did you have a, Dirk?
No.
You're just saying thank you. Okay.
Just thank you.
Kevin only has a couple meetings left, so we got to bring him up to the microphone.
Yeah.
For the microphone, yeah.
Okay, now, we're ready for roll call vote, please. Whitman. Aye. Bradley.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Jacob Itzkazier.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now, we move on to board salutes. We have three of them. We'll start with Sarah.
A board salute goes to all involved in making a warm welcome for the Iowa State Board of Education, which held its regular meeting right here in this room and then went on to visit Bryant, Bryant Elementary School while they were here visiting us in Dubuque. First, thank you to Brad Tigas and Michael Lawrence, who provided on-the-ground technical support to be sure that this boardroom was ready for the board's meeting and live stream across the entire state. The team from the Iowa Department of Education coordinating this meeting couldn't say enough good things about the service they received from our staff as well as this wonderful meeting space. Second, thank you to Megan Richardson and her team at Bryant Elementary School, who welcomed the board for a site visit so that they could showcase the work that they're doing on early literacy support. The board was thrilled to see learning in action here in Dubuque, and it was great to highlight the amazing work that our educators do each day in Dubuque to support student reading specifically. So, kudos to all involved for supporting a successful visit at the state level and for representing us so well.
Thanks, Sarah. Dirk, I think you have one, too?
Yes. A board salute also goes out to the many administrators and team members across the district who have spent their Friday evenings supervising at all-the-home football events. Welcoming thousands of spectators to beautiful Dalsell Field each week is no small task. We would not be able to make it happen without the work of Director of Activities and Athletics, Joe Maloney, the high school principals and assistant principals, and administrators from across the district who help ensure that games run smoothly. Additionally, the work of our ticketing, concessions, and parking teams, as well as our school resource officers, help make watching a football game under the Friday night lights a great place to be for our students, families, and community members. Thanks to all involved for making these events possible.
And we just had a full house probably at Dalsell last Friday night with Hempstead Senior playing and with the score being so close.
Yeah, close game.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
And Nancy, you have one.
I do have one, yes. You know, as a, as a career-long educator in Dubuque schools, I'm thrilled to be able to represent the board in making this salute. That is to the five district students who were recently named 2024 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. I see Dr. Kazier showing some proud monks body language over there. So, we send our congratulations to Benjamin Call from Hempstead High School, Claire Hoyer from Dubuque Senior High School, Mazen Imron from Hempstead High School, Sophia Kazier from Hempstead High School, and Ryan Veldy from Dubuque Senior High School. Receiving this honor, people may not know, you hear National Merit Scholar, receiving this honor puts three outstanding student, these outstanding students among the highest-scoring entrants in the state of Iowa and among less than 1% of the U.S. high school seniors. That's a big deal. And so, we, we send our congratulations and offer our strong, strong praise to these students, their families, and their teachers from over the years who have worked hard to help them be and become all that they can. We know that it'll, they'll be fun to track them as they go forward.
Thank you, Nancy. Is there any other board salutes? Okay, moving on.
I move that, yep, I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
We need a second, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
There we go.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have Megan Elsinger from Lincoln's Elementary School to tell us what's going well at Lincoln.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here to talk on behalf of our staff and students about what's going well at Lincoln. We've had a great start to the 24-25 school year. Our dedicated staff came in over the summer to collaboratively work together, aligning curricular materials and planning for differentiated instructional experiences for our students. Additionally, all of our certified staff are currently taking advantage of our state-sponsored letters training, which is all embedded in the science of reading and have worked hard to implement this learning into their lessons for students. And of course, our very exciting news is the completion of our playground project at Lincoln Elementary. This project was a collaborative effort with the city of Dubuque, Mercy One, Wellmark, and the Dubuque Community School District to provide an inclusive, safe space for our neighborhood that serves our community. On behalf of our students and staff and our neighbors at Lincoln, I would like to thank the board and Superintendent Hawkins for your ongoing support of this project. Another shout-out goes to Rob Powers, Kevin Kelleher, Mattie Haberland from the city of Dubuque, and Candace Udaly-Lobach from our Lincoln Parent Group for their efforts to make this possible. Our playground is busy every afternoon well into the evening, and we appreciate this opportunity for our neighborhood. Additionally, I'd like to extend an invitation to all those here tonight to our Lincoln Playground Grand Opening and Fall Carnival, which is taking place a week from Thursday, September 26th, from 3:30 to 6:00 at Lincoln. Superintendent Hawkins and City Council member Rick Jones will be addressing the crowd at 4:15 that afternoon, and there will be games, several community partnerships, and we are just excited to welcome you all to this wonderful space. So, thank you so much.
It looks beautiful.
It does look beautiful.
Just driving by on the street.
Yeah.
Megan, I want to comment on your students. I've never seen four second graders in so much unison. They were awesome.
They were very excited.
Yeah.
We loved having them.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board at this time? If so, we ask that you state your full name and the connection to the district and limit your comments to three minutes.
Seeing none, I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
I move that the Board of Education approve, oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Now, I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. And I noticed at the State Board of Education meeting, they read the, the titles of things on the consent agenda. So, with your permission, I, I'll just say that consent agenda is the Treasurers Report, the Budget Report, Listing of Accounts Payable, Facilities and Support Services Committee, Actions, Educational Program and Policy Committee work, and the Activities Council. So, I move that the Board of Education approve those items.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Now, we'll move on to committee reports. And the Facilities Support Service report, I will do. We had our meeting on September 9th, and we went through mostly lots of times, we talk about infrastructure and buildings and grounds projects that are going on. So, happy to say Senior High School is completely finished, and we, the board, got to do a tour on it. We had our meeting there Monday. It's phenomenal. So, if anyone ever wants to visit Senior and you have an opportunity, please ask someone to get a tour and go through because it's awesome. So, we're so happy that the project's done, and we'll look for us, you know, there's just a few little punch things to do, but that'll be, you know, finished soon, but otherwise, it's officially finished. We talked, okay, update on other district projects. Sageville Elementary School solar project. Alliant bills are continuing to be tracked, and work continues with Ida Bailey for the tax credit. And that should happen sometime in 2025. Lincoln Elementary School, the Wellness Outdoor Project, that is completed, and we should have a final documentation in October on that. Preschool renovation, we talked about that. We also got to visit the preschool, the Seedlings, out on the west end of town, and we had our educational meeting, their committee meeting, and that place is phenomenal. So colorful. We have five classrooms that are full now. We have five more, ready for more students. All the teachers and staff were there and so excited. So, things are going well there. And they, too, have some beautiful playground equipment at that school. Ottoman Playground Replacement, that project is complete. Eisenhower Gym Edition Project. Drawing designs were shared with the committee, so we had some overhead views of what it could look like or should look like. And the committee was included with a secure entrance, the project, art and music classes, a new gymnasium. Current art room will be the principal's office. This is the initial plans. An additional space for the kitchen. Anticipated in late to early winter for drawings to be completed, and then the project should start in 2025. And, they'll go out for bid then, and then, no, start in 2025 with the fall of 2026. They anticipate getting bids this fall. Irving Mechanical Remodel Project. Drawings are coming together. They're still working with the city of Dubuque and the DNR for design issues addressing the underground mines in that property. So, we can't move too quickly. We have to make sure we, before we start digging, that we don't hit any mines. Transportation Siding Replacement. The equipment is on site, and the work has started. Josh Poseyak gave us an update on synergistics, and he also shared a presentation outlining the Energy Management Action Plan for 2024, 2025 that would include consumption and mitigation for new Seedlings preschool building, promoting student engagement, and helping them understand the importance of energy management. And we have some motions.
Yes.
You should read those, Dirk.
First motion I have, I move that the Board of Education approve change order number four to Sheetz Design Build LLC on the preschool renovations project in the increased amount of $44,935.
I'll second that. I do have a comment on it. Commentary is just that this change order came about and is related to the preschool project. As explained by the architect, these were not entirely unexpected changes but are very important to allow us to have that facility have both a welcoming entrance but also be completely ADA compliant. And so, the change order details include things like making sure that the doorways are wide enough and that the concrete work is optimized so that it is very accessible for all of our visitors to this playground. I asked specifically at the meeting if this does continue to keep us on budget for the preschool project, and it does. So, it's a change order increase of roughly $45,000, but does keep us on budget.
Thank you. Do a second.
She's...
She did.
Okay. I'm sorry. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number four to the Sheetz Design Building LLC on the preschool renovation project in the increased amount of $44,935,000. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I also move that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $4,130,206, or as determined, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following Department of Education audit review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2024 special education deficit funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $4,130,206, or determined, as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the DE audit review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2024 special education deficit funded through the cash reserve levy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I also move that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $587,514, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the Department of Education Audit Review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2024 excess costs of the LEP program funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission